Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for April 3rd, 2023. If you would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. We give you thanks for your many, many blessings. We ask your blessings upon our school system, students, and staff. And then we ask your continued guidance. These blessings we have in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Okay, item number three is Citizens Address the Board. Anyone signed in? All right, number four is Approval of our Work Session Agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Okay, no one opposed. Motion carries five zero. All right, number five, um, item information.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Goal area one, student success. Just to kind of bring up some of the information as a, for information mostly, but spring break next week. And so after spring break, we will kick in and start the testing cycle, getting ready for those final few days before the EOCs and EOGs are administered. And so in your packet, you'll see a copy of the dates for the end of grade and the end of course testing. Um, and the, the specific subjects that are there. So, and then as course on top of that, there are summer retests that are scheduled for late June. You'll see those dates on there. Uh, and on top of that, then there are also the summer school dates, and you'll see the summer school dates attached as well, as well as the number of days that everyone will be attending. Um, and you'll see those for all three of the, of the different schools. So, just to give you the information so we can start planning. Parents, by the time that we actually get back for the, for the next round of work sessions, we'll already be in the throes of actual testing. So just, just to let everybody know. Any questions on any of those three areas that are there? If not, we'll go to organizational effectiveness. The item number B1 is a whole board training. And again, we, we had scheduled something for the February, the 28th. Uh, then unfortunately, I think we moved it to April, the, maybe the 6th, if I remember right, and that we weren't able to do that. And then, um, it, it's my recommendation that we basically fold that up into the next one, which is our annual budget retreat, item B2. The B2 is scheduled now for May the 4th. Uh, it was previously scheduled and approved for April the 28th. And so, uh, May the 4th seems to work with everyone's calendar. And then we'll, we'll meet, go through the entire budget process. And then anything else, we can count that as whole board training if everybody attends. Okay?
Just have to make sure everybody is there, or we won't get our credit.
That's right. Everybody has to be there to, to have it as, count as whole board training. All right, so the next area, item B3, that is a huge surprise to everybody. Uh, I know that Buddy Deloche worked extremely hard during the last legislative session to get this approved, and as my understanding, um, can you pull that up for us? Basically, there was a provision in the law that allowed for land owned by the state that we are not able to tax, and a great quantity of that. Um, that the last time any distribution was made in the state budget was in the 60s, based on Mr. Deloche. That he was able to put this through. It is a line item on FY24 budget. Uh, it's going to be a continuation line item, meaning that as funds are available, it would continue to come. Um, now, the governor has to still sign it. Okay, and that's, that's again contingent upon how his staff looks at everything going into it. But if, if all said and good, it looks like the division to the entire county is pretty significant, a little over $2 million. And that based on the mileage rate and how that factors out, that we would get about 61% of that, and that would be at 1.2. Now, one of the questions that I did ask, based on this amount of money, is where would it go to? Would it go to the county, and then county distributes it, or would it go to the tax office? And I think the answer is it's going to go to the tax office. So if it goes to Wanda, she's going to probably end up taking two and a half percent off of that on top of that. So she'll have to manage that. But that's again, it's, it's technically, it's tax money for that state land. Um, this is, this is a huge, huge surprise, wonderful for our county. I would ask the board to consider that during our budget process, one of the laws that you'll hear about in a few minutes that, that was passed has to do with the literacy bill. Um, I would ask the board to consider taking that money and spreading it out over four years. And let's put that money towards improving literacy in our elementary school. Uh, specifically, if we do 250, 300,000, however the math ends up working, once, once any other money's pulled out of it, that we, we pay for a literacy coach, we pay for parapros, um, and, and that we have a committee that comes together, says here's how best to use that. But we've said this since I've been here, our children don't come to the table ready to eat. Okay, uh, there are things that have to happen, so we have to, we have to do a lot more to get them ready by third grade to actually be able to read. And so if we can put money towards this, and this is a great opportunity for us to do that, I would just ask the board to consider doing that. I, I think it, we get a, we get a lot of mileage, um, for our young kids. And then by the end of that period of that, that four years, even if stretch it out to five, if we invest it right, because we could put this in Georgia Fund One account, keep it separate, we draw interest off of it, and that interest would be pretty substantial. It may even pay for some of the positions that I'm talking about. Any questions at all about this? I know I sent you all that information earlier, I said it was coming. Um, but you know, I did talk to, to Patrick at the county, and I've talked to David Stevens at the county, and I've talked to Buddy about this. And I'm just, I'm excited about it. It's really good information. Any questions from the board on it?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you for that. Um, next item up here is the Carter Foundation, and again, you mentioned that, you know, we have had grave concerns over mental health, especially since the pandemic. Um, we've been in contact with the Carter Foundation. They, they specialize in finding funding for mental health. And so they, they go to counties, they're fully aware of the availability and what Apex does, and what this place does, et cetera. But they're, they plan to make a visit to us. Um, they want to pull together some of the entities that could fund part of it. But if we were able to, for example, have them come together, talk about where we're at, and then potentially provide additional funding or find additional funding for Apex, then maybe we could have more than one counselor. And that serves all three schools, and maybe we're able to go back to the original funding, um, several years back, which was one per school. But that's to be discussed at that particular meeting on the 25th. Correct date, 25th? 25th of April. Any questions at all about the Carter Foundation? And obviously, it's just like a sound, that's Jimmy Carter's, Rosalind Carter's Foundation. Just to let the board know on item B5, the, the way that we calculate the free reduced, the ability actually to have a meal that's provided for breakfast and lunch at, at no cost has to do with our, our economic status in the community, um, as well as what's called direct served, um, certification. So direct certification along the lines of if somebody has food stamps, et cetera. We're fine at Todd Grant, and we're fine at the middle school. But the high school is sitting at like 38 point some percent, and the cutoff is 40. So it's not like we can go out and find more people that meet this. But we have asked for consideration that maybe they lower that threshold. There's a potential that could happen. This is all for next year. Uh, but that has other implications. It has implications on Title I funding, implications on some other areas that we just need to be cognizant about. Now, we, we're going to go in and ask for some waivers even of the Title I funding in order for them to still receive and be able to have money distributed to them. But I wanted the board to be aware that there's a strong possibility of that taking place. All right. Now, I, I'd like to commend Mr. McNair and Paula Lloyd. Um, their work on making sure they reviewed the IEPs, making sure their placement decisions are made. As a result of that, I received notice last week that this county is no longer on the disproportionality list. And if you remember, that means that 15% of, of the 6B budget had to be set aside specifically for mitigating the, the impact of disproportionality, among other things. So, again, and it was, how much was it?
About $55,000.
$55,000 was, had to be set aside in order to, to do that. So with this change, because we, we've met the standard, that means that $55,000 helps pay for sped teachers and things of that nature that we've had in the past, that we've had to, to figure out how to do. So, um, I, I applaud you and Paula for your work on that, Ms. McNair, and I just, we have to keep that up as we go forward. So, any questions on the disproportionality?
Thank you.
Next item up here is cross-functional monitor, monitoring. And so on the 2nd of March, we had our folks had to literally sit at a computer screen and wait to get, you know, we need this, we need that, send us this, send us that. And so when that came to closure, you know, on the 2nd, they said, it's not done yet, it's going to extend out a whole another week. And so during that week, it was send us this, send us that, et cetera. Um, typically, the data, the, the responses come back in, and within a month of that. So we're sitting this week, we expect that we could receive the results of that. I call it an audit, it's a review. It's basically to making sure that we use our federal money the way it's supposed to be used. You know, s, s, for the last couple of months, we've had our Medicaid reviewed, and, and it was extremely well. It went extremely well. In fact, they, they commended us for how well that was being maintained. The, the federal folks also came in and reviewed our, our, uh, normal procedures and their general funds. Again, no findings, everything was great. Now we just need to have this one come in, and then that kind of finished. It's one of those, we're through it again until they start the clock again for the next year. I expect that by, maybe, maybe by Thursday's meeting, we might have some results. If not, we'll, we'll get them out. And that has to do with everything from Title I, Title III, Title, Title VI. Um, all the title programs get reviewed during this process. ESSER, the ESSER budget, you know, all the federal money that came in, um, to make sure we used it right. And, and I mentioned to you before, and I've mentioned to you numerous times, we would send up a budget, and the state would approve the budget. And then lo and behold, some other district would go through these audits and say, no, you can't use it. So then they, literally, I, I, building an airplane as they fly it, was kind of how it went. And so, um, I expect that we'll get some notices that you should have done this, should have done that. But we've used it, and everything we've done has been approved on our budgets. All right, so, um, item B8 is the night school. And so just to kind of recap where we're at, we've had our night school up and operational, uh, as a, as a basically a satellite of Glenn County. Um, it's been operational now for, what, about a year? Mr. Masah, Mr. Masah's one of the administrators that runs that. They meet usually two, three times a week. These are students that have dropped out, uh, are behind, they get to work on, uh, getting caught back up, and you know, have a potential to graduate. There are three main systems out there that operate this type of program, and that's Mountain Ed and Coastal Plains and Foothills. That basically covers the entire state, and it's open, it's open enrollment for anybody in the state to be able to go. Mr. Masah, you had what, about 25 kids, give or take, that have been attending? Um, the, the positive part of that is typically they're taken off your rolls, and they go to school there. They get caught up, and they can graduate from there. So Foothills, it's been around, excuse me, uh, Mountain Ed's been around for 20, 30 years, doing this same process. Foothills came in, and they've been doing a great job. And they, you know, w, w, when I was in Glenn County, I started the charter process for Coastal Plains. Went to the state board, got it approved, um, only expecting to take care of Glenn County. Well, as it stands, going into this session, there were like 1,500 students throughout 12, 13 different school systems attending this program. Uh, the state legislature looked at it and didn't like it. Didn't like how it was funded, didn't like, you know, some of the, some of the impact it had. And so as a result of that, they basically, the, the charters were coming due on two of the schools. And they allowed for them to stay for another year, this upcoming year, and continue to operate similar to what they're doing right now. But come the end of next year, those students will remain on the books for the school system that was, was providing them. Good things, bad things. Funding continues to come to the school system that has it. But that means if they don't graduate, they don't graduate. They're now against the school system. Now, I can, I relate this similar to this as like the ombudsman program. Somebody outside is providing the instructional piece for you, so there's very little value in us continuing to do it in that manner. We would just end up operating it on our own, because there are kids that go to this that regular school day doesn't help them. Regular school day is a detriment to the family as a whole. So they're able to come at night because maybe they have a job every other day. Or maybe, maybe it's a young lady who's, who's pregnant, that, you know, she doesn't want to attend a regular school day. But we've done a great job of getting those kids through, and then, and then the graduation rate for these kids is really pretty high when you take it all into account. But major changes, they voted 175, I think, to zero to approve this new legislative change, um, which changes a lot of the impact on us. Um, we're going to do some more digging and how, how it's going to unfold by the time of next year so that it's in place, and we're still taking care of the needs of these kids. Mr. Masah, did I miss anything on that? All right, so FY23 state budget, the amendment came in. And so, uh, in favor of a lot, um, one of the things that was a big hit, and I'm, and I presented this to the board previously, was the insurance. So they've already started to charge for the increase, almost, it was about $600 increase in each individual employee's insurance, starting this past January for our certified folks. Classified will kick off to next year, maybe get spread out. But the state provides funding for those we, who we earn. Anyone we don't earn, we pay. Okay, so if we have, for example, an authorization for, or earning of 50 teachers, but we have 52, we pay that insurance out of our pocket for the two. It's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand, no matter what we do as part of this. But this new QP, uh, QBE funding for FY23 is fully funded. Meaning they looked at things and said, maybe in the past we didn't do it, here we're going to give you a little bit more money. So we had an increase in FTE by somewhere around 20 something as the aggregate for the school year. That 23 increase equates to, at, close to a hundred more thousand dollars. But on top of that, this additional funding for the insurance, um, and then fully funding things, we'll probably get around 600 and some thousand dollars extra between now and the end of this fiscal year. Is that, is that a correct statement, Tammy? So, um, that's FY23 budget amendment, which is a good thing. Also is going to be in there some money for security. Uh, I think the final approval was 50,000 per school for this fiscal year, which goes in line with what we talked about with Alyssa's Law, which is later on in here, which basically says you have to have a mobile alert system in place. Synthetix is a mobile, meaning that the teacher has the ability to, to set the alarm no matter where they're at. They don't have to go to a static on the wall type thing, it's on a button of some sort. So Synthetix has offered us, if we want to continue our yearly, it's fine for another 30,000 this year, another 30,000 next year. But then they're going to change that you have to upgrade it, and the upgrade, it won't work any longer. But a, but a five-year rate was somewhere around, correct me if I'm wrong, Rusty, 150, 160,000 dollars for a five-year rate. It almost fits what we're getting money from the state. Okay? I, I did also present with you the, the issue of Pinpoint, which was another program. That Pinpoint, it's got some pros, it's got some cons. So does, so does Synthetix. But one way or the other, we have to do this, and it's going to be my recommendation that the next work session, we make a decision on which way to go. Okay, so that's coming. But that's kind of the, the rundown of where we are for the QBE for F, for FY23 budget. Now, the next one though is FY24 state budget, which has not been signed yet, but there's some good things in there. Um, there's $2,000 raise for certified employees. To my knowledge, and having looked through it, and maybe they'll amend it at some point, there's nothing specific for parapros. There's nothing specific for secretaries. Okay? There is a 5.1 for bus drivers and for lunchroom workers, and some money for custodians, but we have a separate contact for custodians. So the question that, that I will pose to the board that we'll start budgeting for is, do we make sure everybody gets the, the equivalent like we did last year, um, which would equate to about a 5, 5.1% raise so that the secretaries and the parapros and everybody comes in at the same number? So, um, I'd like the board to start thinking about that. I did ask Tammy to run the numbers for our 4 May to see where that would end up being. Now, on top of that, um, you know, there is money for food service and, and bus drivers were the main ones there. But they're also going to fully fund QBE for the next year as well. Uh, and that basically as an example of that is this. They've always said you need, you know, it'd be nice to have two counselors, two counselors, two counselors. Well, they've established that the ratio of counselor to students or students to counselor should be 1 to 450. So now they want to fund that at 1 to 450. Now, Todd Grant's sitting at about 680 students. He said, we don't earn fully two, but we might want to consider providing another one, and we pay the difference. Okay, so, but we will earn that counselor and a half, in essence, almost, we're pretty close to it.
Beginning this school year?
It'll be beginning the next fiscal year, so FY24. So it would be, we, we would go into the budget, uh, in May and say, we want to set it for next school year to have two counselors, if the board agrees to that. Um, okay, so that's kind of where, where we're at with the budget and, and, you know, what we foresee happening. Any questions on the FY23 amended budget, and there were FY24?
I don't think there are.
From any of the board members? All right, so the next one, if we, uh, can, Tammy, if you'll bring that up and talk about the financial report for March?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Turn to page one, the general operating account. We began the month of March with 3.5 million. We had receipts of 1.38 million and dispersments of 1.76 million, leaving us with a balance of just over 3.1 million in the general operating account. Page 32, 33 revenues. Um, I do want to point out that our tax receipts, we are currently at 88.5% of the net levy of 8.2 million. Um, we've had 478,000 prior year receipts. So we are at like 106% of our budgeted tax revenues for the year. And our total revenues are at 13.6 million, which is 88.5% of our budgeted 15.3 million. General fund expenditures are at 9.28 million, which is 60% of the budgeted 15.4 million. And finally, page four in fund balance, we are currently at 6.9 million in the general fund fund balance. School nutrition, page 114, 114. Uh, she, they have 377,892. And the school nutrition fund balance, page 122.
I don't think you did.
Oh, I didn't put that in there. The school nutrition fund balance is at 418,000. Local projects, page 126. So we began the month with 1.4 million. We had dispersments of 212,000, leaving us with 1.2 million in the local projects account. Money market account, page 131, just over 4 million. And the Georgia One Fund, page 133. We began the month with just over 2 million, and we have these plus receipts of 146,000. And that is a decline in, uh, March of 2022 of 3.2%. And we have a total fund balance of 2.2 million in the Georgia One Fund. And that's all I have. Are there any questions over to you there?
Amen.
All right, thank you, Ms. Franklin. And again, the next item on here is the 12, that's the discussion amendments from previous meeting. If you'll take a look at those and let Ms. Lane or myself know if you have any issues with any of that, um, please give us a heads up, and we'll go ahead and make those changes. We'll check through things. Um, so everybody knows, every one of these meetings is, is recorded and placed on Symbly. So, you know, we have two different systems. We have the recordings that go out on, on the Darian tele, uh, telephones, television system. And then, but on Symbly, they're all recorded, so we keep that for record, and Ms. Lane posts those. And so anybody ever has a question about anything, then go back and take a look at it. All right, so next item up here is item 13, just a quick update, Alyssa's Law. Uh, that's that mobile system I talked about already, and you know, we're going to have to make a decision on it. We do have Synthetix, there's pros and cons to it. Sometimes the, the color doesn't reflect what it should be, the batteries run low, they're supposed to last five years. We have all those issues. Um, in the three years I've been here, it's only been activated, I think, twice. And you know, once was by mistake. Um, somebody had it in their pocket, and, and once was, um, a teacher who thought there was a fight about to happen. So again, it was, it was for good purposes there. The, the procedures though would be that if something ever happened, anybody could push that, and it would alert, and it goes right to our floor plans, if y'all remember, and it triggers in and says, here's where it happened. And that drives everybody. Um, and then I'm going to ask you, Madam Chair, that when executive session, we'll talk about security. Because I, I think that in light of the situation in Tennessee, and I would just ask for everybody's prayers on that, um, that we also just make sure that we're, continue to be prudent with our own measures.
Dr. Phyllis?
Yes, sir.
So, so these are ran off battery?
These are.
Like a smoke alarm?
The, the, where is it at? This, where's it?
Right.
Yeah, um, you can actually pull that down, and there's a, there's a little battery attached to them, and it. So when you look at that, throughout the entire system, how many batteries do, how many of those do we have?
We have a lot.
I mean, it's a lot.
Hundreds of them.
You know, and they, they're even on the practice fields and places that if you were, are within that zone, you could activate it. And so in theory, it's great. My concern, and I, I've said this to Synthetix folks, is, you know, if an active shooter situation takes place in anywhere, God forbid if it does, but the little card, you push the button, and if you push it eight times, it says there's an issue. Well, you start hearing gunfire, everybody's going to be pushing that thing. And so I want it to be able to isolate that says it's here, and not everywhere in the school. Um, that's something I think they have, that's a flaw in this, in that particular program that I think needs to be worked through. Uh, but I do think as well, it's in theory a great program to have.
Looks like it'd be hardwired with power.
Well, that's what Pinpoint is. In essence, it's got little stations that are, that are put in place, and they might have even had some battery type stuff. But there are certain things, and I don't know if this room has one, but it's a little device that kind of allows it to trigger and to have a signal go out, and it's, it's run through the electricity. Is there one in here at all?
I don't see one in here.
Uh, but again, when that first came out, it was amazing. It cost exactly what the state gave us. Amazing. So, so now we're sitting there with the same situation with how much it will cost to upgrade. All right, um, if we can go on, if, the literacy bill, you know, I, I've said all along, I, I applaud the intent of the literacy bill. And which is that we know as a state and as a nation, that our students can't read at grade level by the end of third grade. And that third grade kid, and I know you've heard me say this, but that's the transition from learning to read to reading to learn, and that's huge. So statistics all go in line with that as far as one, nothing. So statistics all go in line with that as far as whether or not they'll graduate, whether or not they'll be in prison. I mean, all of those things are there based on those scores. We know that many of our students, they come to school in pre-K and kindergarten and they don't know. And so we, our teachers who do a fabulous job of this, have to take them by the bootstraps and try to shore them up. So the initiative behind this is great, but some of the things they will put in the first round of it, some of the things, one of them was, you know, that they were going to mandate certain things but not fund them, okay? Well, we know that happens, but an individual reading plan will have to be developed for our low readers. Well, our low readers could be, the school has to have an individual reading plan, and you already know what the issue is when you have an individual education plan that our sped students, that's only 17% of our students. But now you'd have to have one specifically for them, and then what goes into that plan. So there's some ambiguity in this, but I'm going to ask the board to consider that 1.2 million, that we kind of fulfill the intent of this and we start looking to say, "Let's put the parapros in there, one per grade at the first through fifth grade to help with pulling kids out, reading in small groups and doing things of that nature." It also requires in this literacy bill, a remediation plan. Well, you know, so if I have a kid on an individual reading plan, we have to have a target that says they've been tested this many times, here's where we're at, now we have to have an intervention. Now, we have a lot of intervention we've put in place, but this is not a small task by any means. Again, they replicated this for the most part based on what Mississippi did, and Mississippi was almost dead last, rose to somewhere middle of the pack of all states as a result of their initiative. But some of the verbiage in there goes line by line with some of the publishers out there, and that I have a hard time with, because it says you need this and it has to be approved by this, well, lo and behold, this particular company provides that. And that I think needs, they need to be able to take the politics out of that part. I applaud the voucher bill for not making it. I'll just say that, okay? It did not pass and it was a close one, I think of 89, 85 was the final tally, but it'll come back next year. It'll raise its head again. My concern primarily, and I'll say this, is that it would require the state to run two systems. I have no issues with the bottom 25%, which is what later came in it, being able to give an opportunity to go to a private school and $6,500 being able to be provided to that, that's not the issue. The issue was those private schools don't have the same accountability. They don't have a CCRPI score that is published to the parents. If you go to the school, you might find some of that information, but it's not broadcasting the entire state. So there's some issues that come from that. I do expect this will raise again next year, and then if it does get passed, it's getting the foot in the door for that 25% to change to 50%. The changes, that's how things normally happen.
Yeah, private schools have a pocketful of money anyway.
Yeah, well, and a lot of them offer a lot of scholarship opportunities for the kids they want to have come to. All right, so next item up here is the, I think I covered all three of those. Item 14, facilities and operations. Mr. Moss, if you'd like coming up and talking about your HEPA units?
Great evening, Board. I'm really excited about this. Even though COVID cases are on the decline and we're not having a lot of those, as of right now, I'm not aware of any in the system, our general health guidelines and health procedures are still very important, and we're communicating that to all the schools that we just stay healthy and do the right thing. So Georgia Southern had the opportunity to apply for a grant for HEPA unit filters. It's a small portable HEPA filter system that is going to recirculate the air in classrooms. They've provided up to $40,000 per school. So we got a total of $119,561 worth of HEPA filters, approximately 30 for each school for our most, I would say, rooms that have the most action in them. For instance, all the nurses' stations we'll have and the media center, the front offices. And then I chose some of those rooms in the smaller classrooms where those little babies are not sure how to cover up yet. So that's a really great opportunity, three years of filters, no cost to us at all. The only drawback or only issue that we, Dr. Paulus, I talked about, is there'll be a little bit of energy consumption to run them, but I think that the benefit outweighs that cost. So we're hoping to get those in the next month or so.
Three years of filters, right?
Yes, sir. Is there another, is there a way to hand you up for another three years after that?
When we get to that road, we'll know exactly what filters, we'll maintain them if it's really working and we see a difference.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We also have to assess the noise. So if you could, once we get them, but it allows a teacher though to make a decision whether to turn one on or not in the classroom.
Yeah, it has an eight-hour timer, has four fan speeds, asleep mode. They'll be able to work them the way they want to work them. And we're able to make some adjustments to what classrooms we can put them in also. McIntosh County Middle School Kitchen Project Cooler and Freezer. We've been having some issues with our finishing up the last little leg of this adventure with our kitchen with that freezer. They've been in and out, and right now, Ms. Harrison said today that the freezer part was working, but not the cooler part. So they're still in the mix of finishing up that.
He was there this afternoon fixing the cooler part, so he said he wasn't going to leave till it works. Hopefully, he's got all the parts, but I would expect that this is a gentleman that really truly knows what he's doing. At one point, we basically had two freezers. Both of them were going to zero degrees. And, you know, so somebody did something wrong, let's just put it that way. But we haven't paid them a dime and won't pay them until it's all operational, they know it. And so their intent today, that gentleman was over there when I was over there at four o'clock this afternoon.
So that will be our last leg of the kitchen project, and so we'll also be able to surplus those old units and get them out of there. That will be coming up next. Raising of the kitchen cafeteria. Well, instead of going through one RFP that does the whole project at once, it was best that we get rid of the asbestos first. So we're going to split the project into two parts and then get the asbestos removed. We're in the process of getting our two quotes for asbestos removal. Hopefully, we'll have that in the next week or so and then have that scheduled for first day the kids get out early summer and then have the asbestos removed, and then we'll be able to get an accurate quote on just removing the building structure after that's done, so.
That building is full of asbestos?
Oh, I was going to ask.
It is, and so, you know.
How much is in there?
Well, you know, to do the asbestos abatement, from what we project, it's probably going to be about 70,000 just for the cafeteria and that little portion and in the kitchen. As a whole, that's not bad. That means they go in and they totally remove it, do it legally, take it to the landfill that allows it to happen. They're certified people to do it. So we've had one estimate right now, and we're just waiting for a second to see how comparable is. If we were to do the whole structure, it was over 200,000 just in asbestos, because it's not. If, for whatever reason, later, the school system decides to use that hallway, every year, we're supposed to have an asbestos inspection. But to put kids in there, you'd have to go back through and make sure everything's sealed. So possibly new flooring has to go in certain parts of it to make sure that it's contained. Just something to make sure everybody's aware of.
Middle school fence. Mr. Will, he'll pull that picture up. What we have here is the depiction of how the middle school fence will look. There'll be two cantilever gates that are approximately 30-foot, same place where the buses exit and same place where they enter. And then, as you notice, right there, we're the main walkway down to the front office. There'll be a 10-foot swinging gate there. What we have in your packet is two quotes, and there'll be one quote is from a gentleman that has both galvanized and then industrial fence. And then the second quote is two pieces of, two documents, one, it's just galvanized and industrial separated, but it's two quotes, same apples-to-apples with the same cantilever gates, everything should be the same on that. So it was our, my recommendation that we take a look at the industrial fencing, which has the black coating on it.
Similar to the high school.
And be a really nice gate that will last us the test of time. If you'll notice that where our old fence is, that will all be taken out and unveiling the Oglethorpe Square revitalization project to the public, that won't be fenced in it any longer. And if you'll notice, right on the other side of the office, there'll be a small fence there. So just like the front of the middle school, the actual building will be the fencing that keeps people out, right there where the office is, all the way up to the fence area. So nobody will be able to get on the grounds without going through the building.
This keeps everything contained as a parking lot, allows us as well to actually, right now, if you go over there, the gates are open because people come and go, because they have to get to the front office. And so under this, once this building is gone, we'll have the ability to have access for people to truly pull up to the front of the school, come into the office, totally separate. They don't have to come in, we can lock these gates, keeps the parking lot secure, keeps students, because, you know, like Mr. Deverger's class, they often work out here in the area. We would be able to have an actual secured area. So I think this is a very good plan. It does shrink it a little bit, which allows us well, a lot of this stuff that's over here is really rough. You know, the trees have fallen on them, the fences are crushed, and it opens it up. And then they're, you know, through planting of different items of bushes and shrubbery and stuff, will keep people from driving out into Oglethorpe Square, but also still allow access. Any questions on those?
Football field consideration. As you know, we've been talking about our football field and the condition of the field. And so what we did was our due diligence and got ourselves a quote. Now typically, you would, we would always come to you with two quotes. However, what we're coming to find out is that.
To be done?
It will be.
If, yeah. So just to kind of look at this again, I did bring the high school folks here so that you can discuss it. And so if, Gerald, can you talk real quick and coach about the current condition of the field and where we were and where we are?
Both of you.
So the current football field, as we know it, it's not a matter of if we need to do something to it, it's a matter of how that we do something to it. So this last year, the field is being, it's green right now, it looks pretty, because it's living off fertilizer. Last year, nutrients, especially towards the southeast corner, they're gone. It's just sand, is all it is. So we were able to, the football field was getting pretty bad towards a lot of part of the season, and we're able to put ryegrass on it, winter ryegrass, it looked pretty for playoffs, but ryegrass burns off in the heat. And when that burns off, those ball spots are going to come back. So in the ryegrass, most coaches and field technicians don't like to put the ry down, because ry is a mix, not just a pure ry and all it does, it's often mixed with some of their kind of grass. The kind of grass that, our ry that we put down this year was mixed with St. Augustine. So we have primarily a St. Augustine grass field, something you cut it low, it can be pretty, but it does not wear in any capacity, it wears quick. So keeping it fertilized, keeping it going is an option, and we'll have some Bermuda underneath to support it. So it's not as pure as St. Augustine, we'll have some Bermuda from last year come in, but it is going to wear quick. And there's a point where the fertilizer doesn't sustain the field with it. We're sending right now years of putting top dressing sand that's sterile. If this is a sprinkler head and where it started, and you can put sand on it from 2008 on, sand covers that sprinkler head. So now you've got, the root system has to go all the way down through this level of sand like this, that has to go all the way down through that and reach the soil. Ours is sand right now from there. We haven't put any pot soil on it, we haven't put anything else in that capacity. So the quotes, Mr. Moss was kind enough to share, the quotes were way higher than what the guy said in the meeting.
Yeah, sure were.
So our options, the way that I see them, are to continue to do what we're doing now and make the best out of the field. Gerald does as good a job as anybody that I've ever worked with working on field. Take pride in it, I appreciate that. Next option would be to put the Bermuda back down in a sprigging format, and that's the cheap option. It's not going to work, it's like putting one plant in that soil and another plant in it, that's not going to, it'd be an option, you know, to me it's not. And then the next one would be to till it, to laser grade it, to put soil, a soil mixture in it and put a surface on it. He listed 419 Bermuda, that's probably the second best Bermuda you can buy for a field. The others are acceleration, it's a little tougher, a newer Bermuda. And then the most expensive option, which was about 100,000 higher than he told us face to face, would be to roll sod on it. You know, I'm going to be football coach, I know what we're doing and we're going to go out there in the sand and the dirt and whatever kind of grass we have, we're going to, you need to be aware that there is going to come a time where somebody from the state said, "Not enough."
Yeah, we were in jeopardy, potential in jeopardy at that.
If that ry had caught on, we were about to play the playoffs.
That's right.
But that is close. It's in better shape than right now it was, it was last year. Gerald, you want to add anything?
No, it's in great form, because come out a few weeks, we'll host soccer playoffs out there. I'm guessing if you've got a field there, it's like, wow, y'all look pretty good compared to some of the other schools that go on the play, because Coach Blackman, I was talking about that, he goes, "Damn, if we can just keep it like this to keep it in the playoffs." I said, "We will, so we'll be good for the playoffs."
But this field has been a challenge for a while. I mean, the soil's different on one end versus the rest. You know, we've had the issue of just the weeds popping up all over the place.
We don't do anything to one field, that looks pretty.
Yep.
We put all the attention to it.
Yep. And so again, this estimate, you know, we've been waiting for this, and the gentleman finally gave it to us. And it is much higher than we anticipated. And there's a timeline that goes with this too. And the timeline basically is this, if we don't do something by 1 May and start it, we won't have anything for the football season, no matter what we do, if we're going to replace it. But the other part of it is, you do have graduation, okay? That's also a concern. So it would be my recommendation, as we look at this, we either punt and just say, "We're going to keep maintaining it and baby it," and we just keep that TLC that's needed, or we're just bite the bullet and we do this, but we have to start it by 1 May. And in doing so, if you sod it, it's good for graduation. Sprigging, it's really out of the question.
Well, and not to put you on the spot, Coach, but.
I don't mind.
That's what he's here for.
But, you know, my thinking is if you go with a lesser, how much more are you going to have to put into it time and time and time again to continue to maintain it? Or do you just do it? And like Dr. Paulus said, be done.
If you, I don't see him, get what you pay for.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, you know, I talked about this analogy about a month ago, I had a 15-year-old air conditioner go out, and I had the tech identify each part that was out, and I replaced each part, $1,700. Two weeks later, the compressor went out. I should have bought another Aireon.
Exactly.
So that's kind of what we're looking at. It's not a matter of if it's just wet.
Right.
It's just not, it's going to die. And there's some of it that's, right now, that fertilizer's getting in, that sand is doing okay, but as we top dress, as we go, that sand system is deeper, those roots don't reach, fertilizer's going to make it look green for a week or two, and it's gone.
I just feel like we've been talking about this football field for.
How long?
A year, or almost a year.
You know, I'll throw this out there as not in any kind of urgency that's to scare you or anything, but the situation is that we're only able to get one quote is because all the fields that grow this type, they're not, they're already out.
They've been scalped.
They've been scalped up. And he gave us the price, but he said with an asterisk that he couldn't even guarantee that there would be enough sod in there, that they could get enough to cover the field. So it's just something that if we do decide to do it, we need to let them know and get on a list that says, "Hey, if we get the right amount," because it's not a guaranteed right now, he was very clear on that, that it's not guaranteed we can get in there to get sod.
It's a huge investment, again, you know, we can't go into it lightly. Pay me now or pay me later. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And everyone, that is. And everyone, that is the highlight for this community come Friday night. I mean, you got a couple thousand people that attend, and it's not used just for football, it's used for soccer. The band obviously performs on it, it's a community project. And, you know, Coach, going into this, it's, I always say that this is your field, okay? Not just as a football coach, but as the athletic director, and I've given you that. What would you recommend?
The main thing that the field needs is tilled, sowed, and laser graded, and everything put back into, like I gave you the example of the sprinkler. It needs, it needs tilled like a dart, it needs, you know, it needs, we both reached the soil and the roots.
Serious aeration, for sure.
Yeah, it needs addressed, pre-rut well. If that happens, and you take your time, slowly, the sprigging will come in, that's going to be a long process with no guarantee of it being ready to fall. If you bite the bullet, and you roll, you till it, you roll sod, you laser grade it, you've got, this is easy, you've got the brand new field you had in '08. And you don't have to do it again until 15 years later.
Do you have a feel at all for the difference in the 419 versus the celebration, or have you not looked at that cost?
I've never played on celebration until this year. So, the 419 is what most everybody adds. The celebration is the new buzz, it's durable, drought resistant, it's going to be quick.
If we're going to bite the bullet, we may want to look at, you know, how close is it? You know, if it's 30% more, no, but if it's 10, might be a discussion, so.
Yeah, and the big deal would be if you can get it like.
That's, that's going to be.
Oh, the celebration? Okay, so that'll be harder.
Everything is a.
It's a commodity right now.
He was saying that that was, what's taken him so long is to line up somebody that would commit to say, we will have it if they give us quotes. So, that's why he said an asterisk, he said that right now, he'd probably make it happen, timing, but.
Yeah.
That's a great point, Dr. Paul, your point there, coming in here tonight, a 50-pound bag of 419 seed, it's $59.
Oh, yeah, I'm very, not that specifically, but you're right. Yeah. And that's 100 times more difficult to make work, the seed, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I guess what I'm hearing, and if I may be wrong, is that even though this is a high amount, it's going to have to be done some point.
It was, you said it, spot on, we pay now or pay later.
Well, I think also, Dr. Paul, just remember what we went through just to satisfy the coaches, with the drains that we raised. You pointed out the laser leveling, everything, making everything back.
That's right.
Mid, mid-season base, well, mid-season, and raising the drainage up.
That's how high the sand was.
That's what's happened.
Too big a hole to step in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I guess, you know, part of this would be, we have the money, we'd have to squeeze it, it would have to come out, we'd do some adjustments. I do think at this point, based on, for this community, would be the right investment to make.
Gerald, you going to take care of this grass?
I just put you on the spot.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No pressure. Any questions from the board at all to Coach or Mr. Moss or to Gerald or Mr. Willis, anybody regarding this?
Well, it's not a question, but I remember back in '04 or '05, that the state did stop us from playing a home game here, not only because we didn't have enough seats, but the field was in such bad shape, and we had to play in Glen County.
We'll do it here too, and I bought Larry Campbell.
Yeah, I see it was Lincoln County, yep.
Well, in fairness to the field also, thank you for what you did. Get 47 hands in the cookie jar, some of the cookies would be a problem. You put one hand there, that guy's going to pick on the weeds. He come up in there, he's like, oh, hang in, I saw, you know, a mole cricket. He's got to mark this or got it. So, it's easier when you got that as opposed to, we will try this, let's try this.
Yeah, that's right, that's exactly right.
Before we would have a chance sometimes.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, I say, we have the money, and that's, because that was my question, how much will we spend? You know, we'll spend so much sprigging and this and that, and then next year, you know, you'll have to do it again. And then, you know, so we may as well, my personal opinion is, if that's what, you know, you're recommending, we go with it. And Gerald's going to take care of it.
It's a Band-Aid or fix is where we are.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I don't want to put the board on the spot tonight, I try, really try not to do that. But the sooner we move on this, the better we are, because we have to make that 1 May deadline.
Yeah, the 1 May, we're, guys, we're doing some, there's some good things going on in our off-school system. The athletic part right now is a very special seat, the seat. We are the lar, we're hosting the largest OTA contact football camp in the southeast, state, southeastern part of Georgia next year. There'll be damn near a thousand kids out there. So, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on that's really good. And that says, that field is, is probably a problem, as much success is coming right now. Our girls' soccer team is ranked one, we've got four region championships right now. There are a lot of, it's not, you're not talking about 10, five games, you're talking about playoffs in football, playoffs in soccer, boys and girls. There's a lot of wear on that field that, now at St. Augustine, that's there. But it's really, you know, like a blown motor in a car, you're buying a new motor or you're buying a new car. That's kind of the same way that field, our air conditioner is, we'll have to do it at some point in time, because this year, great. If it's not, we'll put a Band-Aid on it, and talk about it again some other time. I'm not mad either way.
I don't care.
I saw his thinking.
I moved, we moved forward with the fix, the sod solution, I guess, option. Well, they're all option one, but I mean, like the third option one. Yeah, the one with the longest number. That's my motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Straggles to go with option, the third option one.
Sod it.
A full nine, the 187, 329.
Right.
Okay, and second by Ms. McDonald. Any other discussion, Mr. McOver, Mr. Hugh?
We are going to be careful where we get future sand from, though, right? It can't come from Chesapeake, they're right here, I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
The motion passed by zero.
Thank you.
Coach, is there anything else you want to say about athletics since you're up here? Could you, would you all mind, just a quick update?
All right, so, transfer is in full effect right now. Our girls' and boys' soccer teams will both be hosted. You know, we split that up from a co-rail in 2019 on a new program, so our girls are the number one seed. They're good enough to go buy a first round, play a second round game. And our boys are the number two seed, right now, and are at one of the two seeds. Then, track, we are looking at first, second, and then we're moving track, which is big. Coaches around the area nicknamed our boys' track team Red Swarm, and they're tops. It's pretty cool watching them have a good time with it. And then, our baseball team is doing extremely well, though, more than likely, I feel really confident by saying this, they'll set the most record, the highest record for school wins in school history. We've got a good little team, we're probably looking at finishing at worst third in the region and at best second, is where we are. And then, our golf program is, it's in rebuild right now. We've implemented with Mr. Brooker and a golf program to get the interest built up at the middle school. And so, we have a funded program that's got some middle school kids involved in golf. So, we're little saplings in golf, is where we are. So, that's what's going on right now with the spring, we're finishing up recruiting, we'll have some kids, I think, once the transfer portal comes to a halt, we'll have some kids just this week with some offers. And then, we've got some basketball offers right now, first time we've had that since Desmond McOver signed just a few years ago. There's a lot of positives, I have to keep remembering that when we're on hard times.
One of the things that was noted is that indoor facility has made a difference for all of our athletes, and.
It has, it has, it's a, mine, so the kids change when that, when that, it's really cool. They look so truly good now.
And they have.
They nicknamed that session Buck Speed, it's called Buck Speed, and the weight from this nickname is Small Time.
Coach, you're doing a great job as our athletic director and head coach, and I appreciate you, I want you to know that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're not done with the stadium yet, unfortunately, just so everybody knows. The speaker, speakers have blown in the stadium, and, you know, I was out there for the soccer game the other day, and they put up some portable ones, and you still can't hear. So, we've got an estimate, it's high, but it's, again, those are ones that have to broadcast over a very large open space. We have replaced the speakers at the softball field and the baseball field, and that was one of the concerns when I first got here. Standing there, I couldn't even hear who was the batter. Now, they're exceptional. And now, again, with the football field, those are, there's like $70,000-type repairs and speakers. We're going to get another estimate or try to, we'll come to you probably next month with whatever that is. But that's, we want tit for tat on our two estimates, and when they're very difficult to find, you know, one of the estimates clearly said exactly what we asked, the other one didn't. So, we're going back saying, let's make sure that they're actually comparable. Sorry.
No, sorry, that's spot on. That will complete our football field transformation. If you go to H, the stadium lights, they'll be in the system on the 17th and 18th of this month. They've already assured me that they're going to work around those two playoff games that we have for soccer. They'll place them somewhere, and then they'll start working on that afterwards. If we have some more games or anything happens after that, they said that they'll always do it in stages where the field will be usable in the event of a need for a night game. We'll see how that plays out.
And I may have missed this, but while we're on the fields, did we fix all the electrical stuff where the boxes were so low? And some of, and the, what was that, the breakers?
Yes, you know, we had a couple different theories on that, you know, when we had Georgia Coastal Electric come out, we figured out that it was not a huge process to change those breakers. And they said that that's the way that a lot of fields do it. So, it's something that we just want to continue to look at and see if it is a, is an issue. They claim it wasn't, but we've also now taken on that we can change a break, change the fuse that's in there. It's not a huge deal anymore, that we can, we can take care of that. And I think that the best option at this point is just to watch and see if we have any more issues that we can't.
But the drainage and the water was the problem about them shorting out, or what?
That's correct.
There was some water in there, but they sealed them all up, they went through and sealed everything up, and, you know, they say that that's where.
Basically, you came up and said that they said, this is very common. I don't know why it's a common thing to put them under the ground, but it's a very common practice. And they sealed them up, and I think what we said is, let's try another season to see where we're at versus expanding, because it was going to be a pretty good amount of money to go ahead and change those. They were able to get all the baseball field lighting operational before the season started.
And my only point was to secure the fact that since we're working on the fields and we're working on the stadium and we've done all this stuff, let's get it all done.
Get it done, I agree with you. All right, so, the middle school gym renovation, middle school gym, I tell you, that floor, the gentleman who redid the floor said that because of the age of it, that it's just an absolutely gorgeous floor, that it turned out beautifully. The painting, everything was spot on, especially with those new curtains in there, it does look like you're into a brand-new gym. The last little piece of the puzzle is those bleachers, and that April 12th, they're supposed to be here in the system. And then, shortly after, building those up, again, remember, if you can think back, they were blue, ratty looking. They're going to have the black seat tops, and they're going to look really sharp and make that gym just absolutely pop. All new door handles and pushbars have been put on every door, the doors have been painted black. We have just one more last piece of the puzzle to make that gym renovation complete, is the bleachers. And then, we're going to recover that countertop that goes into the concession stand to make it 100% new.
And the stage drapes?
Stage drapes are in, they're absolutely gorgeous.
All right, any questions for Mr. Moss or anyone else regarding facilities and operations?
Yes, sir, I have something, Dr. Paul. Where are we at with the awning at the middle school?
You know, last.
I asked you about that.
Yeah, I know, but again, the gentleman that does it does a great job with it. When we did the awning over here, he's, he's just showed up and just did it. And we expect he'll probably do the same thing, it's, when he gets the material together, he'll say, I'm coming tomorrow, and it's one of those deals.
Still, it's material.
It's material, it's gathering them, and the guy does a great job with doing it, but literally, it's, he could show up tomorrow and say, I'm here.
Yeah, okay.
We're hopeful that Mr. Riles will be back, maybe tomorrow, he has a doctor's appointment today. So, he's the main contact, and we'll make sure we follow up and see if we can get that.
All right, any other questions on facilities or operations? All right, Mr. Moss said, just a quick update on COVID?
Again, no reported cases at this time. I always say, just for the cameras, that we still are doing our due diligence with just general health, safety guidelines. So, it's not COVID anymore, it's general health, safety, and being smart.
All right, that takes care of goal area three, culture and climate. Under quality workforce, Madam Chair, I do have personnel recommendations to make in executive session, as well as security and legal to discuss when we get to that part. On our goal area five, community engagement, Ms. Sheets, can you talk about our excellent readers celebration?
So, that's this Friday, y'all, second annual.
Second annual.
So, the excellent reader, you know, we did it last year, we kind of had a week to plan it, so this year, we have longer. And we've got advertisements in the paper, hopefully, the word is getting out. So, it's a bunch of fun for the kids, right, they can hunt eggs, and it's great for the community to come and be involved. So, those are good parts. But the main thing is really is to advocate reading. It's one time that we can get some literature into the hands of parents. So, this is one thing we're giving out, this is just a little brochure. Each parent who attends is going to get a bag, and it's going to have a book for their child. And this brochure will give them tips for how to read that book with their child, or things that they can do to learn letters. And then, they'll also get, sort of like a fortune cookie, but it's going to be an Easter egg. And when they open it, instead of a Chinese proverb, it's going to have a reading tip for them in there. But we'll have an Easter bunny, we're going to have a moon jump this year, so it'll be a ton of fun. I'd love to see y'all come if you can. I'm encouraging my granddaughter to come, hopefully, your niece will come, Richie is, he'd be coming. Missy, if your grandchild can come, Fred, you guys, some people can bring now.
We'll see.
All the little people, but I'm excited about it, and just, and the kids will also get, so the parents are getting a bag with reading literature and a book. But the kids will also, every child in Todd Grand, or every child from the community that comes will also get a book.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that the Boys and Girls Club, they will organize and everything, you know, they'll have their folks out here. They purchase the eggs, I mean, that was like 4,000 eggs last year, and they'll have even more this year. So, we're excited about that, a great partnership of Boys and Girls Club in doing that, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Earth Day, so, I don't know if I gave a copy to Rusty or not, but in your packet, you'll see the names of the, we have nine trees that will be dedicated as part of the Oglethorpe Square revitalization, and as well as the Earth Day celebration. So, you can take a look at those, I appreciate the recommendations from each of the board members as we move forward. This is exciting, so as it stands right now, on the 17th, Coastal Electric has, they're funding very large live oak trees. So, nine of them's going to be on those $6,000. And so, they're going to be shipped from a couple hundred miles away, and they'll arrive here on Monday, the 17th. The 18th will plant those, Mr. Deverger's class is, this is part of that process as well. They'll be there along with, I think his name is Jerry Holcomb, I apologize if I'm wrong, but he's the arborist, and he has been there as part of this as well, and said. They'll be there along with, um, I think his name is Jerry Holcomb, I apologize if I'm wrong, but he's the arborist and he has been there as part of this as well and says, here's how you plant and here's how it size. And this is a big deal and so the twenty-first, eight-thirty, if you're here, come join us. We've invited the families of those individuals that are, that'll have a tree dedicated to them and, um, you know, they, they may not dig a hole, but they'll be able to put some bulge on there and, you know, be able to to say this tree was in honor of our, um, our family member, uh, or a lost one, et cetera, it's going to be a great, great event, so, um, any questions at all on the twenty, on that thing on the twenty-first? The other thing that's going to happen is Home Depot has donated one of these for all of the classrooms at Todd Grant. And so it's basically a kit that, uh, we also have a, um, donor for the seeds, but every class will get one of these at Todd Grant. They'll be able to learn about planting and then be able to watch them grow and so, uh, it's pretty exciting to, that they've done that, but all that is part of Earth Day. The, the revitalization of Oglethorpe Square is, it's, it's a huge deal and people have asked, I mean, it's cleared away, it's made more green space and it's a, it's, should be a welcoming place for people to come in this community. All right, so, Madam Chair, I believe that eight-thirty in the morning.
No, for the eight, eight.
The, the first one, I think, is at nine?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty? That's when the first class comes out at nine thirty out in.
It's the eight, three, zero, the prepaid.
And they do it by grade.
But then every half an hour after.
I think an email came out about it today.
Yeah, I saw.
It's got the little, the times for each grade, um, age group.
So Ms. Sheets has done a great job working with, with the school and Boys and Girls Club and putting this together and I appreciate that. Uh, Madam Chair, again, that's all I have on the agenda, um, barring any questions on anything on the agenda, then to, uh, go into executive session for legal personnel and security.
Got a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stragles, second. Mr. McCover. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, we will. Massachussetts County Board of Education have adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel, security and legal. They have a motion, return to open session.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McCover, second. Mr. Stragles. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
If I could, Madam Chair, I know it's not on the agenda, but if I could just ask everybody to stand and then if we can just do thirty seconds of a moment of silence for the loss of life of the, the three young students and the three faculty members, um, that tragic loss in Tennessee and just to, to remember them and also just to think about and ask God for his intervention to prevent something like that from ever happening in this rural district. But if you can give me thirty seconds on that. Thank you all very much.
Okay, our next item is, um, superintendent's personnel recommendations as submitted. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stragles, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I'm staying from voting.
Okay. All right. Motion carries four. And Mr. Hewitt, same.
Four zero one.
Four zero one. Okay. All right, any comments?
Um, I would just like to, um, extend our deepest sympathies again for the, um, victims of the shooting in the schools and, um, want everyone to tune into our excellent, um, activities here on Friday for the literacy and the reading and invite the community to attend. And, um, my prayers go out to everyone and have a blessed Easter and a great spring break, thank you. Oh, congratulations to the soccer team, yes.
Go Bucks.
I did too.
Happy Easter and go Bucks.
Madam Chair, um, I can't remember the days or the dates that was on WTSC, but we had two teachers, um, that.
Teachers of the week.
Teachers of the week, uh, from MCA, which was, uh, Coach, uh, Marcus Hawkins and, um, Coach Ron Minish. And I think, um, um, Coach Hawkins teaches history.
History.
And Coach Minish teaches, um, uh, study skills, get kids ready for, um, you know, the SAT and, um, so congratulations to them, um. I think, um, I think it said both of those, um, gentlemen had twenty-five years of, uh, you know, teaching, um, so glad to have them in our school system. Um, we have a state champ in Skills USA. Um, Luke Todd in Marine Service Technology and if he stays the course, he'll be a busy man here in McIntosh County one day. He'll be, uh, well-sold, sold out. Um, and I understand he got a five thousand dollar scholarship and will be competing in Atlanta in June, so congratulations to him. And, um, congratulations to our girls soccer team, number one in the state. And, um, as you heard Coach say, they'll, they'll start playoffs here, um, pretty soon, so congratulate, congratulations to everyone that I mentioned. And, uh, Madam Chair, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
I would just like to wish everyone a happy spring break.
And remind everyone Thursday was our business man's.
This Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.